Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our town hall. I'm just gonna wait about a minute while the numbers drop in and then we'll get started. Thanks so much for being here today. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, everyone. Mrs. Raimondo, would you share the translation information? And then I'll continue.
Buenas tardes a todos los padres participando hoy. Queremos recordarles que abajo vamos a tener un círculo de traducción en español. Si quieren optar por mir ese botón, van a tener la traducción de la señorita Teresa Ortiz. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kristana Wachs Harper. I'm the administrative director for people in community services here in Pomona Unified School District. We want to welcome you to our parent town hall this afternoon. We have two of our departments presenting for you. We have our educational technology department led by Dr. Jen Wagner, and we have our special education department led by Ms. Wasario Valen Asai. And so we're glad that you've joined us. I wanted to start with our board member. I see we have Dr. Proman. If you'd like to say a few welcome words as we get started, please.
Sure. Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time to attend. I know we're just on our second day of school and I hope things are going okay. There's gonna be little bumps in the road, but we're gonna, we're going to get through them together. And, um, and let me just say that we, we are here to support you, to support your children, and support your family. So you let us know what we can help you out with. I know there's gonna be some technology things and this is a, this is a big thing to undertake for us, but, but, um, we have wonderful, wonderful people at the district working so hard. Thank you, Dr. Wagner, for your support and your whole team. It is 20 full-time jobs, maybe 30, right? And, um, but, but we're on top of it. We're getting it. We're, anybody that's made requests, we're getting them. We're going to address it. So be, be patient. I again, hope that it, the first couple of days were okay for your children. But if it was a little bit of a bumpy start for you, don't worry about it. We're all gonna work together and get everything straightened out. Let me just say, I spoke to a lot of teachers. I spoke to a lot of parents. I spoke to children, and everyone had positive things to say. So, so, um, so just give us a little time and we'll get it all worked out. We are here to support your children academically, social, emotionally. You let us know what we can do to support you, and we will be there. We're gonna have a lot of great parenting classes. We're gonna have a lot of breathing classes to help us, help us with our, our stress during this very stressful time. And, um, and so be looking forward to those, those parenting classes. We're, we're having classes for our teachers also to help them in that, in that area as well, and for our children, of course, because the children are under stress too. So you let us know how we can support, how we can support you during this difficult time. Hopefully, we'll all be together soon in school. But until that time, um, please, you know, let us know how, how we can support you. So, um, thank you so much, Dr. Wachs Harper, and to our PUSD team, and mostly thank you to our parents and families for, for your support. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Proman. We also have with us Ms. Lilia Fuentes, our assistant superintendent for education services.
Good afternoon, parents. Thank you for joining us today. We do have our tech team here and our special ed to answer many of the questions that you have, have. And so, again, we're always listening to your feedback. We appreciate the time and, uh, you know, we started yesterday. And so we wanted to make sure that we're here to support you and your students. Uh, and again, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Harper so we can get started, because I know that's one of the things that we want to do is get, um, share our presentations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Raimondo, if you would do our welcome, please.
Welcome back to school, parents. We want to thank you for the time you're spending with us today, and we want you to know a few things before we get started. First, we believe in what you're doing at home with your children. We trust you and we admire the work that you are accomplishing every day. We know that we've only just begun, but know that we are listening and we care about what is taking place in your child's education. You and your family are important to us, and with our work together, we will succeed. As a reminder, a parent is the greatest thing that a child can have. For you to be called mom or dad is a blessing. We thank you for joining us, and we look forward to a wonderful opportunity to hear from our experts this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Raimondo, and our superintendent, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you very much. And I'm so sorry I'm so late here. I was on a phone call, didn't see the time and notice it was after five. Dr. Proman, thank you for being here once again for our families. And welcome back, everyone. Stay tuned, and it's exciting times right now. School's back in session. I'm looking forward to popping into some of these Zoom meetings, definitely with you, but I'm gonna try to sneak onto some of the classrooms. Dr. Proman, we're gonna have to try to figure out how to get some codes and get into those classrooms and say hi to our students. So, uh, we're excited about the new year. Please, uh, listen attentively, learn a lot. We're learning from you. And so just, uh, we appreciate your patience, your care, and the partnership that we have between your homes and our schools. So, again, Happy New Year to all of you, and we'll be talking to you very soon. I'm sure either this way or in person. So with that, Dr. Kristana Wachs Harper.
Thank you, sir. Very briefly, I want to share with you, we have our people and community services staff. We have our caseworker specialist, Teresa Ortiz. She is our translator. We also have our other caseworkers from our community schools. We have Krista Lopez and Davina Popas. We have our community school coordinators, Melissa Ayala and Julie Cortez, and our pupil resources coordinator, Tatiana Gomez. And you've already met Mrs. Diana Raimondo. I'm going to share with you the order for this afternoon. We're going to start with our ed tech team, and then we will go to our special education team. Once they present, we will then have an opportunity for questions and answers. We've given them the questions that you shared with us thus far, but then you also have an opportunity if there are additional questions, please put them in the Q and A queue, because those are being sent to me so that I can ask them of our department. So I'm gonna start with Dr. Jen Wagner, have her introduce their team from ed tech, and we'll get going. Thank you.
Good afternoon, families. Thank you very much for being here. And I, I do want to say that we do appreciate all of the, the time that we've been able to spend with you during these town halls and during our open Zoom Q and As and tech support that we've had this week and will continue to have for the, for the rest of the week. Um, I'm not going to say a lot. I have a team that is stellar, and they've been working directly with teachers' parents. And I want them to be able to speak and share where we are with some of the tech that you need to know as parents. I do want you to know that at the core of ed tech is equity and access for our students. So we are, as Dr. Proman said, we've, we've had a huge number of requests of need out there for Chromebooks, for hotspots, for chargers. In the past week and a half, we're up to, and I'm looking at it in real time, we're up to 1,422 requests. That is daunting in a week and a half. And so with our team, with, with our IT team, with the help of cabinet and board, and we've, we're rallying and we're working very hard to ensure that we can get you what you need as soon as possible in a safe way, because we are still in COVID, and we do want to make sure that we are keeping you safe and we are keeping our staff safe. So, so with that, I do want to tell you, I promise you, like, I'm not sleeping at night because of all of the need out there, honestly. I feel for all of you that are probably very stressed about like what you need. And so we're working really hard to get that to you. And my team in ed tech is working just as hard on the other end to make sure you have what you need to be able to, to connect and know how to access the learning that you need to access. So, so with that, I'm, I am here to support Sabrina, Jordan Ortega, and Michael Dyer, two great teacher specialists that are on my team, and I'll be here for questions as well. So thank you again for being here. And Sabrina, I believe you're starting.
Mike's gonna start us off.
I got it covered.
It was 50/50.
Right? So, good afternoon. What it started is, so what I'm gonna go through is basically what ed tech built out for families. The most important thing is, we wanted to make sure that families had all the resources and everything that they needed to help them through this distance learning process. And by creating this tech guide, we hopefully answered pretty much most of the questions that you would have. If not, that's why we are also doing this week and next week our parent meetings, Q and A for tech also. So if you as parents, they're on the website, if you need to, you can go ahead and jump in. We've had a good number of parents and students come in. So this is our guide. It's in Spanish and English. You'll see that there's a Bitly at the top, so you can go to that website, or it's also on our website, and you can access it through pust.org also. All right, Sabrina, next slide. All right, so what we're gonna go through today to get you started is usernames and passwords for your students logging into the Chromebook. So if you're having difficulties, we have a process to log into Chromebooks with visuals so you can see technical support, Chromebook care, optional insurance, clever, learning environment and routines, and securely, so that you know as parents that you can be secure with that we have the security on that you as a parent can also control those features at home. All right, so here, um, we have an infographic for you for student usernames and passwords. So for a student username, um, so we have little Miguel up there Rivera. So his first initial of his first name is what's going to start out as student username. And then also it has the first four letters, so R I V Rivera. And then it'll have the last two digits of the projected graduation year. And then if there's more Miguel Riveras or anyone that has an M Beaver there, then it will go sequentially with a number. So for example, if there was a Michelle Rivera, there would also be an M Reeve45 with the same graduation projected date, and then it would just go sequentially from there. This is how students have their student names and passwords. Also down below, you'll see to log into the Google browser, any Google apps that we use, because we are a Google district, and then their Chromebooks, the internet, and PUSD Wi-Fi at home. This is what they would log in on the bottom. So logging into the Chromebook, as you can see from the graphics here, number one, they would go down, and in the left-hand corner, you would see add person. So the add person button would bring up for the student to enter their username. And so the username is what we just went over. Also, if you're having trouble with the username, the teacher can also help you out, or us at ed tech can help you out, and the technical assistance number, which we'll go through too. And then they would enter their password, and then after that, they would be able to log into their Chromebook. And now that they're in their Chromebook in the Google platform, so anything that they use within their Chromebook that they need to get to, they're able to get to easily, and they don't have to use different passwords and different usernames. So here, technical support, so I kind of touched on that right now. The number 909-397-4800, extension 23780. You can call from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And then there's also a student and staff technology support request. Like Dr. had talked, Dr. Wagner had talked about earlier, you know, about 1,400, uh, parents have tried to connect through the support request form, and we're doing as much as we can, as fast as we can, because the need is out there. And so that's why we created the support form. So if you do need that help with hotspots or the Chromebooks, fill out this form right there, and then you'd be able to, we, we'd set up a date for you to come through and, and handle a Chromebook exchange or a hotspot exchange, or if you need to grab a hotspot.
And Michael, if I can interrupt really quickly. I just want to, uh, share that I did put in the chat the Family Tech Guide PDF in both English and Spanish for you that you can open up for yourself. Also, when it comes to hotspots, we're saying, we're talking about hotspots quite a bit. I just want to share out that the hotspots are really for our families with the greatest need who are unable to provide internet at home where they are. So the hotspots are hotspots though. So if you think about like your, your phone, your cellular phone, sometimes you've got really good service and you can connect. Sometimes you can't, because it's all dependent on that cellular tower, and that's how our hotspots are. So, so they're not ideal. I'm not gonna say that they're, they're going to solve all of your internet problems, especially if you, you know, you have multiple students at home connecting. We do want you to know if you do have the need and you need each of your children to have a hotspot, we, that is available now. You can sign up on the form. But I'm also going to post in the chat our, our flyers for low-cost internet. We've, we've partnered with the California Emerging Technology Fund and everyoneon.org to provide just resources in our area for low-cost internet where you would have the broadband app in your home where you would, it would be a much better connection than what a hotspot's going to give you. That is an option. I'm not trying to just push that agenda. I do want you to know, though, it is going to be a better connection for student learning than what a hotspot can provide. But we are giving you what we can with the hotspot option. So I will put that, post that, just in case you want to explore. The, the costs are from $15 to $25, depending on the service. So that is an option, and, and that is all I will say, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wagner. So check out the chat. So Dr. Wagner's gonna put all that information in there for you. So also, students might have problems logging into apps if maybe they've changed their password, because students from grades three up to grade 12, they usually can change their password so that it's, you know, a password that only they know. So when we do our student internet safety program, we want to make sure that they're learning about how to keep a password and how to keep it safe. So we recommend that they change their password probably once a semester, just like anybody else would when they do something. So we want to make sure, in case that happens, a lot of times in our platform is it'll save their passwords, and a lot of times they're able to save their passwords on a Chromebook. But when that happens, a lot of times they might have problems getting into certain apps that they need to get into that they're using for learning. So we want to make sure, we added a video there on how to clear all the cache and the history, the cookies, the app data that might be storing that information. So after they do that, and you watch this video, they'll be able to access those apps that they might not be able to be getting into. We use Clever. So Clever is a single sign-on portal that we use in PUSD. So it's really nice when the students open up their Chromebook, there'll be a tab that automatically opens up to the Clever portal. They log in with their Google ID. And then within this system, this ecosystem of Clever, what happens is they would search for the icon, which most students know by now, and then they would click on the icon, and then it would log them into whatever app or program they need to use. There is also a guide there to show parents, such as yourselves, the names of what each icon is, and to give you kind of a guide to help your students out if they don't know which one to choose. The next thing is Google Classroom. So Google Classroom is where usually all of the assignments will be for your students. As parents, what's really nice is that you're able to get emails. So if you can give your email to the teacher, the teacher's able to put that in with your student, and then you'll get an email back from Google Classroom to where you can choose daily, weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, on all the reports on what they're assigned and what is due, and if they've turned it in. So it's, it's really important as parents to keep up on your students, to give your email to those teachers, and then they can plug them into the Google Classroom, and then you stay connected with, with what's going on. And then Parent Connect. Parent Connect is really important. So with our system and what teachers use, Equitas Q, is when anything that is put in, or any data that you put in when you re-enrolled online. So you can go into the Parent Connect. You can see your students, what, what's going on with your students. If you need to change something like an email address or a phone number, there's also a guide there, so you're able to do that. Changing a student password. So if you and your student want to change the password, there's also a guide there to go in and change the student password if you think it's been compromised. And then information about online student safety. So that's the most important, especially in our district. Digital citizenship, we teach throughout the year. So our teachers have to teach six units throughout the year for students on digital citizenship. You can also find that website there. And then you need help with Zoom. We've added a video there for you. And then, like we said, if you need some other information with that, then we're glad to help in these Q and A tech sessions that we're having during the week. All right, so Chromebook care. So this is just an infographic of Chromebook care. So how students should take care of their Chromebook. Then you as parents to make sure what they should be doing properly to take care of their Chromebook. You know, always keep it in its case. When carrying it around, carry it with both hands. They're, they should close it instead of walking around with it open. Make sure they're not drinking or eating around it. And then make sure that, that they're responsible. They're not just throwing it on their bed or anything like that. We want to make sure that, you know, they keep it away from extreme heat. Don't keep it in the car if you go somewhere. And then we want to make sure that you, they don't leave it unattended. So if you're actually, you know, somewhere and they took it, don't leave it unattended. We want to make sure that that happens. So this is the Chromebook care infographic for you, that you can go through with your, with your students. And then optional insurance. So Sabrina, are you gonna talk about the optional insurance?
Sure. So students are now, the portal to purchase optional insurance is now open. Sorry about that. You can click on the flyer on the right. You can also find it at our website, or you can go directly to schooldivicescoverage.com. The window opened August 3rd, and it will stay open through September 3rd. But at the point of time September 3rd comes, on the next day, you'll no longer be able to purchase the optional insurance for the Chromebook. So just be aware of that. The cost for the optional insurance is there? Mike, do you see that it's covered for me? $35, sorry about that. The cost for the optional insurance is $35. You can purchase it online. It also covers the stylus. For those students who have a stylus at home, if it's lost or stolen or students, it's not, no longer functioning, it will cover the cost of that as well. So it's something to consider, but it is also optional for students and families to purchase. So from here, there's a lot of, a lot more in our tech guide for families. We're not gonna cover every single topic today, but know that you can find more information about some of the tech topics that we've discussed already and others. I'm gonna go quickly to some of, to address some of the issues that we've had from parents who have come to our Q and A sessions over the past two days. So just a reminder, Mike talked about Clever. So when students open their Chromebooks, they'll see the page that you're seeing now. It will ask them to log in with Google. And we're not gonna point that out, but instead I want to point out at the bottom that students should know that Gmail may be a way of communication between the teachers themselves and the students. So you can look for Gmail on the bottom taskbar of the student Chromebook, and that's where students may find communication from the teacher. As part of the communication, they may see Remind notices. So Remind is a communication app that the district is using system-wide. So you may receive Remind messages from the district level, from your school level, or even the teacher level. So be aware of that. There is an app for Remind. It allows parents to communicate directly with the teacher via the Remind app on their phone. If you do not have a smartphone, you'll still receive the messages, but they'll be in text message form. When you have the app on your phone, it's kind of nice, because you can allow it to translate into your primary language. If you're looking for the Remind app to download it on your phone, you can find it in the App Store. If you're gonna search for Remind School Communication, the application itself is free. So we encourage parents, if you're willing to do so, to use the Remind app and download it to your phone to allow that direct communication with your child's teacher.
And if you haven't connected yet, you should have received an email based on what you put within your Parent Connect portal in our student information system. So those emails were sent over the weekend. If you did not receive it, please contact your school site to, so that we can get that information to you.
So if you don't have the app, you'll still receive text messages. And this is an example of one that I received from my child's teacher. So this was a welcome one that was sent. And they'll give information about things like, hey, Zoom reminder, Zoom's at 8:20 today, or we'll see you tomorrow. Don't forget, parents have students wear college t-shirts for college t-shirt Wednesdays. So any of those reminders can be sent via text. If you have the app, you can always control the notifications. So if you don't want to have notifications every time you want to check that manually, those are things that you can control in the app itself. The other thing we wanted to point out, and Mike talked about it briefly, is Google Classroom. It's a platform that many, many teachers use across the district, across grade levels. So you'll see Google Classroom pinned on the student taskbar. Again, that's on the bottom level of the Chromebook. When you click on Google Classroom from a student's device, if you haven't done so already, you may have invitations from the teachers to accept. And this is an example of what it would look like. So you'll click the blue button and accept the invitation from the teachers. From the Google Classroom, you'll find things like the Zoom links to join the students' classrooms. You'll also find homework assignments and things that the students may need to complete. We did get quite a few parents having trouble with their students logging into the Zoom. So there's one technical support we wanted to address today in today's webinar that we didn't get to talk about on Monday, because now that students have started to try to join Zoom links, we've noticed that there's some common problems that are arising. So one that we want you to watch out for is if the student has a Zoom link and they are trying to connect on Zoom, and they find that they're unable to do so. So it's failing to connect. One of the things that we found, and this is to protect our students. One of the things that we found, and this is to protect our teachers and their classrooms, students are having to authenticate, which means they have to sign in with Google. On the teacher's side, the teachers are setting their meeting so that students have to log in with their credentials so that we know it is Michael Dyer that is entering the room and not Jane Doe, instead posing as Michael Dyer and that kind of thing. So to protect the Zoom rooms, we've had teachers use those settings and that could prohibit students from being able to access the Zoom links. So that parents know how to address this issue. One of the things you want to do is before the student signs into the Zoom link, if you're having this issue, in the student's Chromebook, go to the Zoom app itself. Again, it's another one that's pinned on the bottom taskbar of the student's Chromebook. You'll click on Zoom. And then you'll open the Zoom app. It should look like this. So what your direct students to do is make sure that they sign in. So once they click the sign-in tab here, it'll direct them to please sign in with Google. So again, there's three options to sign in. We want to make sure that the students pick the sign-in with Google. Once students open the tab to sign in with Google, they will have to type their Google ID. So again, Mike mentioned earlier that it's the first initial parts of the last name and projected graduation year. And then it will be at at apps.pusd.org domain. If you're not sure about the student's Google ID, once the student's signed into the Chromebook, they can always click on the button on the bottom right that will also tell them. There's also a button on the top right, and I'm going to click on mine. So when I do that, I do see my own name and Google ID is there. So the students can do so as well. Once the Google ID is entered, students will be prompted to enter their password. It's the same password they use to get into the Chromebook. And once that's complete, the students should see their name on the top left of the Zoom window. Now that the student is logged in to the Zoom app itself, this is the right time to go back to the Zoom link to open the teacher link. And that way, the students will not experience the trouble with logging in. Now, this is different if they're joining with ID and password. But this is the common problem we've come across today several times when students are given the link and they're not able to get into the Zoom meeting itself. So again, it's having students log in to Zoom first and then opening the Zoom link. In addition to that, we just wanted to briefly revisit. Parents can download the Q Parent Connect app also. So Mike mentioned that Q is our student information system where parents can access things like re-enrollment. They can also check things like attendance, any assignments, if the teacher's using the gradebook, schedules, et cetera. So if you have more than one student in the district, you'll see more than one student listed here. If you don't see all of your kids listed on the app itself, once you're in, you would need to make sure to call the school site directly so that they can help you with that issue. Very, very important, and we said this earlier with the Remind app and Dr. Wagner referenced it, is that when you look under your student contact information, make sure that the phone numbers are accurate. These are the phone numbers that Remind is going to use automatically to send those messages out to parents and families. In addition to that, you need to make sure that your email is accurate too, because Mike mentioned Securely. Securely is the program we use to protect students on their one-to-one devices. Securely also allows parents to monitor student browsing history and to block websites that parents don't want students to access. So if you personally don't want your children to be able to access any YouTube videos outside of school hours, you can block that as a parent yourself. You can even turn off the Chromebook access. Let's say you're going to leave the house at nine PM and you just want to make sure that your students are not continuously on the Chromebook past that time. You can lock the Chromebook so that they're not able to access the Chromebook at all. So those are just features on Securely and you will not be able to access Securely if we don't have your accurate email address. So that's very important. In addition to some of the features on the Parent Connect app, you will see a new tab that's been added. And one of those tabs that's added is the cohort tab. And that kind of tells you if your children are in part cohort A or cohort B, if they're being meeting with their teachers on Monday and Tuesday or Thursday and Friday primarily. So that's another new tab that you'll see in Parent Connect. The Parent Connect app, there's a flyer. It's both on our website and in the tech guidebook that's been shared in the chat already. You can click on this flyer. It's available in English and Spanish if you would like support in being able to add the Parent Connect app to your cell phone as well. And I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing now. Actually, let me go ahead and share the website. I remember Dr. Walks Harper asked me to review that with parents. If you go to the PUSD website, as we see here, our famous Teresa Ortiz featured on the Channel Four News. From the parent website, from the PUSD website, you can go to Departments. And on our Department tab, you would click on Educational Services. And from this particular page, you can scroll down on the right-hand side. You will see a tab called Educational Technology, and that's our EdTech Department. And we want you to know that on this webpage, you'll see again, there's that text request form that Michael mentioned earlier that Dr. Wagner said we've had a ton of requests for. It's right here on the very top. Also listed on the top is a tech support hotline that's available to parents, students, and staff. On this page also, on your Distance Learning Families tab, you will find the tech guides that we've provided in the chat today in English and in Spanish available to you. In addition to that, you can find things like troubleshooting guides, flyers for our optional insurance, some tips on how to keep kids safe online, your password changer, all of these things we have mentioned previously, but we just wanted to let you know that they're available here too. And some parents have asked us to do some tutorials. For example, I'm pointing to Seesaw at the moment. Kids may be using Seesaw to do complete assignments for their teachers. So if you wanted, as a parent, you needed support there, you can click there and there's videos in English and Spanish. We are continuously building some of the content out and we hope to add more to it as the year goes on and as we get those requests and needs from the parents. So I'll go ahead and stop sharing.
Thank you, Sabrina and Michael. That was great.
You're welcome. I also added the direct link to our EdTech Distance Learning for the families in the chat.
So we will stick around for any questions, Dr. Walks Harper.
Yeah, at this time, I don't see EdTech questions yet in the queue, but we'll wait a few minutes and just to make sure. But thank you so much to the team for presenting. You guys have been doing this day in, day out, just to help our families get connected and stay connected. And we certainly appreciate all of your efforts there. I'm going to turn now to our Special Education Department and ask our director, Rosario Valeniasai, if you would introduce your team, and it's all yours.
Yes, we'll start sharing the presentation today. So good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you back to Pomona Unified School District. We are excited to see you and we welcome our students back to school second day. And we hope you had a restful summer and that you and your families have stayed well and safe. I'd like to introduce you to all of our Special Education Program administrators, the Special Education Team led by our Assistant Superintendent, Lilia Fuentes. So I am Rosario Valenhasai. I am your Director of Special Education. So I'm going to have my team introduce themselves.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name is Debbie Montoya. I'm a Program Administrator. I supervise the speech-language pathologists.
Hi, my name is Patty Adams, Program Administrator with Special Education. I support our Adult Transition Program, our Inclusion Program, and this year, some of our moderate severity and ASRD programs.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Abril Diaz and I supervise School Psychologist. I work with non-public schools. And I also work with our State Compliance Program and our Early Intervention Program.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sylvia Greling. I am a Program Administrator here at Special Education. I support the Infant Program, the Preschool Program, the Elementary Program, and the Special at Home Hospital Program.
Hi, I'm Johanna Sandoval and I'm a Program Admin with Special Ed. I support all of secondary special education and also the K8, our Adapted PE Team. And I also assist with Selpa Data and Compliance.
Good evening, everyone. My name, did she break up? Good evening, everyone. I'm Marley Eppon, one of the Program Admins in our department. I work with one of our specialized programs, ASRD. I host a lot of our professional learning for our staff. I also help chair the Community Advisory Committee and some of our workshops that we provide for the parent university.
Thank you, team. Johanna, next slide, please. So we designed this presentation to respond to questions that were asked at other parent meetings as well as questions received from the school sites and the Special Education Office. So every time you see another one slide after this, it would have a heading responding to specific questions. So we have them in six general categories. You may have other questions and our Administrative Director, Dr. Walks Harper, will bring this to our attention today and hoping that we get through all of them. If not, not to worry, because we will always get back to you with a response. So what are those six categories? Number one, what is the legal basis for Pomona's providing leading distance learning? Number two, what will distance learning look like for students receiving special education services? Will students receive related services and assistance from paraeducators or aides? Will special education follow the same policies and procedures as general education during distance learning? Will special education provide initial assessments, triennials, and annual IP meetings? What support can be provided to parents? How can parents contact the Special Education Department? So those are the six categories. Next slide, please. Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so the first question is, what's the legal basis? I think you've seen this visual. And again, I'd like to restate that it is based on federal, state, and county guidelines, as you could see represented here in this slide. Right now, all instruction, including special education and related services, will continue to be provided via distance learning, which is a method we have in Phase One. Next slide. The priority at this time is complying with local and state health officials directives and keeping student, staff, and the community healthy in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. The situation is rapidly changing and we are committed to keep up with those changes. Each student with a disability is treated individually. In determining how distance learning will be provided to a student with a disability, it is important to consider the unique learning needs, accommodations, and supports noted in each student's IEP. As to the related services, to the greatest extent possible, students will continue to receive related services. We're talking about speech and language, adaptive PE, counseling services, consistent with students' IEP to support their special education program in a distance learning environment. Next slide. Phase One, as was mentioned, means that the schools are closed and instruction will be hundred percent distance learning. All students engage in live online instruction with their teachers and peers and would also include independent digital and offline learning tasks. Next slide, please. So what would it look like for a student receiving special education and special education and related services? IEPs will be implemented to the extent possible in light of this temporary distance learning model. IEPs will continue to contain the plan for normal school operation and implement it when school operations resume in Phase Four. That does not mean that it will not be implemented. It will be used as a blueprint or a pattern, a template, a guide for us for the distance learning instruction program. Next slide, please. So we have sent each parent of student receiving special education and related services a prior written notice. It outlines what the distance learning would look like for each of the student we have in our programs. It was sent to you via general mail and electronically through the parent portal on July 31st. And I hope you have received the letter. If you have not, please let us know. This week, this week, we started, this is our second day. So this week, expect to receive the distance learning plan or schedule from your child's special education teacher, which outlines the distance learning classroom schedule for your child's program. In the coming weeks, your child's teacher will send you an individualized distance service chart to implement your child's IEP in a distance learning instructional model. And I hope, I hope we keep an open line of communication as it is particularly important for us as we navigate these new and changing challenges we're faced with. And thank you for your patience, because we really need to work closely together so that we could come up with the plan that would work best for your child in response to those IEP goals we have in place. Your case managers will contact you to discuss the instructional program, answer your questions, and as well as get your input regarding this written service plan. So I'm going to turn it over to my team members.
Welcome, everybody. We're going to start with the preschool programs. As you can see, these are the distance learning plans of the classroom schedule of your child's program if they are in preschool. For preschool students, we have several models of instruction. Each model of instruction will receive its own distance learning plan. So depending what program your child's in, you will receive a plan that reflects the program hours and the classroom schedule from the case manager. As Ms. Ballin has stated, in the next few weeks, you will also receive an individualized plan from your case manager, from the student's case manager, to show how the IEP will be implemented. Here we have the elementary RSP distance learning model. In all of our models, children who have related services, they will receive those models services as well. Here are RSP students, including our TK Inclusion students. They will follow the General Ed Distance Learning Plan. And the RSP teachers will collaborate with the General Ed teachers to make sure to the greatest extent possible that the IEP is implemented in a way that is possible and beneficial for your student. Here's a different model for our Mile Mod SDC classes. Again, showing you that every model has its own distance learning plan. Our students who are in our Mile Model settings, they need more face-to-face instruction. They have a higher level of support. You can see the cohorts here. The classroom is broken up into Cohort A and B. Teachers are going to have live interaction with each of the cohorts four days a week. And the Wednesday, they will have interaction with both cohorts. Again, you will receive the individualized plan for your own student in the next coming weeks, dependent on how their IEP is written.
For students who are in middle school, we stuck with the General Ed plan to make sure that your student is receiving the periods of instruction that they need that align with their General Ed peers.
is receiving the periods of instruction that they need that align with their general ed peers. So they will align with them and be able to participate with their peers as much as possible in those general classes while still receiving their special education services and support from their teachers. In high school as well, we are, we are following the general ed schedule for distance learning. This is to ensure that your students will receive not only the support they need from their special education teachers, but also to keep them on track for graduation, to make sure that they can still continue to earn their credits that they need so that they can graduate on time.
Here is the plan for the adult transition program, which provides program to students who are 18 to 22 years of age. The top plan applies to eight of our classrooms and the bottom plan applies to one of our classrooms. That particular classroom, we wanted to eliminate the number of transitions that the students had to participate in. You will see a lot of activity in the afternoon. And that's because we are making up for the fact that our students currently aren't out in the community or going to work.
All of our plans are also translated in Spanish. And if you don't see it today in this presentation, we actually have all the plans available. But for the purpose of this presentation, we are showing you examples of how those plans would look like because you will be receiving them from your teachers. And rest assured, we have specific plans for specific programs and grade levels, which would in turn to be, which would also be translated to individual plans some along the lines within a couple of weeks. And you will be hearing from your teachers how those plans will be interpreted using your IEPs as the guide or the blueprint. So we're just showing you that we, we understand and we're translating them in Spanish as well. Okay, so the, the next question is about will student receive related services and assistance from paraeducators? So we'll go ahead and talk about related services first and then we'll go with a question regarding paraeducators.
Okay, so with regards to related services, and this would include anything such as speech and language services, school-based counseling, intensive counseling for certain students, occupational therapy, physical therapy. So those providers are during this week working with the teachers because as you've seen, they have a very full schedule with your students. And we're making every attempt for the related service providers to not have the student miss any instruction, live interaction with the teacher. And then during the week of August 17th, those providers are going to be directly providing services for your student. You would expect that those related services providers are also going to be reaching out to you to work towards setting up a schedule that is going to meet your students' needs. Next slide, please. There is going to be, as everyone has mentioned, a distant services chart. So that chart is going to show the different parts of the IEP that your child has, and so it's individualized, based on what's in their IEP. The related service that's in the IEP, such as speech and language services, is going to be translated with your input and put into that distant services chart to show how that related service provider is going to meet that need during distance learning. This is an example, and so it doesn't mean that your child's chart will look like this. And you can see it looks very busy, but each related service is going to go on a line. And then you can see a time of day, the number of minutes. There's a legend there that shows Google Classroom as an example. So your student might be getting some tasks to do that are assigned by the speech and language provider or the school psychologist or the occupational therapist. And that person would of course work with you to help you to know how to assist that stu-, you know, your child should they need some help. And then it will also go on and provide what the schedule's going to look like in terms of morning, afternoon, and have a time slot for all of those related services. And this is an example, again, as Rosario was saying, these charts have been translated in Spanish. And so this is just a small piece of the chart. The chart itself is going to have several pages because it's also going to include the goals that are going to be addressed as well as the accommodations for your child's IEP and/or modifications, as well as, like I said, the specialized academic instruction and the related services.
So we are very excited that during the opening of this school year, our instructional aids have returned to the classrooms. And so you will be seeing more people in the classroom supporting the teacher. They can be working with the teacher. They can be modeling. They could be rewarding, reinforcing students' participation. They can also take small groups and work with students who need a little more attention or more intensive intervention. However, the instructional aids may not take students by themselves. They must be with, always with another person, which is the reason why you will always see two adults with your student if they are part of a breakout room in the classroom. As with everything else, special education is required to follow all of the procedures and rules that general education implements. That means, for example, starting this school year, we will be taking attendance on our students who are in Zoom and doing remote learning. We will be providing you reports of progress towards their goals and objectives every quarter. And we will be following all the safety precautions and procedures related to COVID-19.
Everyone, as stated earlier, we will be continuing to follow federal and state compliance, which means that we will be holding IEPs. Those include annuals, triennials, and initials. IEPs will be developed for us, for our students, and we will be holding our IEPs through Zoom or phone conference, depending on, on the parent need. The other question has, is assessments. Will we be holding assessments? Yes, we will. We will be moving forward with them. However, this year, they do look different. They will be very individualized because, like mentioned earlier by the team, we are trying to address the needs of all of our students. And we will be sending home information for our parents to read and look at to discuss what the assessments would be like.
So for our parents, we know that there's many questions and, and things that parents may need support with. And so we do have two venues right now for parents to join us and hear a little more about what our special education department is providing for our students. So we have our community advisory meetings. These are some of our dates pending approval from our CAC officers. They will be via Zoom from 8 to 6. We hope to have our first one next Thursday on August 20th. And again, we will be sharing some of the templates for our distance learning platform. Also, we will be part of the parent university. So we will be answering many of the questions that come up during the town halls and some of those burning questions that we, we kind of see come in from our parents and just figuring out how do we support our kiddos at home during distance learning with some of the challenges that, that you're facing, Wi-Fi, just the disabilities that some of our children have. So we'll be giving you some strategies and suggestions during those parent university. Our first one that we'll have is on August 27th from 9:30 to 10:30. So we welcome you to come to those, to those meetings. Next slide. Also, a lot of parents wonder, how can they get in touch with us and get some of their questions answered right away? Well, one, you can call our department. So our, our office is open. So you're, you're more than welcome to call our office. Another way to, to get in contact with us in, on special ed is through our website. So these are kind of the step-by-step in how to access the parent help link on our website. And when you complete this link, this is generate, this goes to all of our program admin and our department. So the person that may be most appropriate to respond to your questions or concerns will be in contact with you. So that is one of the ways that parents can get in touch with us.
That ends our presentation. So, Dr. Christina.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. So we do have some additional questions in the queue and I want to get to those. Thank you so much for presenting. You answered so many of the questions that have come up for us since we've been doing the town hall. So thank you to the team. I had a couple of questions about preschool and the speech improvement program. If you can share any information regarding that.
That would be me. I'm very happy to report. Unfortunately, when school closed in March, as you could imagine, trying to put together the distant learning plans and what have you, students in that speech improvement program, we really didn't have adequate technology and staff in order to have that go ahead and proceed. However, we do have a plan moving forward currently to restart those early intervening services. This is actually not a part of special education. However, we are all about attempting to provide early intervening services in order to prevent possible later disabilities. So if you do not get contacted in the next two weeks, please reach out to our office and I will make sure that, that you do get contacted moving forward.
Thank you for that. And then is the preschool program going to be the same at all the sites that have preschool? Will it be same for those special education students?
I can answer that. Each of the preschool sites have a variety of preschool programs. Some have a self-contained class. Some have, some sites have a partnership or inclusion classroom. So depending what program your child is in and what program is appropriate to your child, that is a program that they will be attending. And so that's how the preschool programs are set up.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Question, and how to request us a plan letter, special education plan letter?
The question, please?
It just says to request a plan letter. I'm looking to see if there's anything additional. Just the parent never received a special education plan.
Oh, you mean assessment plan?
No, no, I think she's talking about the chart and the charts will be sent out by August 21st.
Okay, okay. Got it. Perfect. And then a question.
For now, I'm sorry, Christina, but for now, this week, as I mentioned, they will receive a general schedule. So they will be, they should be expecting to communication from the teachers. So they will receive the schedule or the plan. And then what Patty mentioned is about the, the specific distance learning services chart.
Got it. So every student, okay. So the, the schedules that you shared with us this afternoon or this evening, every parent will get a copy of that schedule for their child. Got it. That tick. See, two for the price of one. Thank you so much. And then I had a question regarding the triennial assessment. What is, what is able, what are we able to assess in distance learning? And what will we be able to do? What do we need to wait for in terms of in-person? Because the question is about can the parent delay the triennial until we get back on campus?
Yes, the parent can delay the triennial and those are part of the forms or documentation that I explained that would be sent home. And at this time, we are not doing in-person assessments. Everything will be through, will be done virtually. And so that is, that the documents that are sent home gives an explanation of what that looks like. And it gives the parent an option to decide what they would like to do or how they would like to proceed.
Thank you so much. And the, I have just a couple of general questions. I just want to make sure. If we have a student, Spanish-speaking student, how are we providing support? I would, I just want to answer generally in terms of our English learner students. Just as we have EL support in the, which is integrated into the curriculum, that will continue in distance learning. So the ELD instruction will be a part of distance learning. And that would be for general education as well as special education. And I'm looking to see if I have. Parents have just some general concerns about the distance learning format and their particular child's capacity to attend to distance learning and what types of accommodations or adjustments are available during this time.
So I'll, I'll take this question, Rosario. So we realize that this format is, is very stressful for all of us, but certainly more challenging for some of our students who have more significant disabilities or perhaps attentional issues related to autism. And so for students who are more challenged, this year, we will be sending home materials for these students to use during their personal learning time. And so that they have the opportunity to do tasks that don't require them to be attending to a computer. So for students in specialized programs, teachers will be sending home materials, curriculum, hands-on activities by the 19th, so that the students don't have to spend the entire time doing direct instruction on Zoom all day long.
Okay, thank you so much. And then with our instructional aids, our paraeducators, how will they support students in the distance learning format with IEP goals and, and so forth?
You want that one, Patty, or you?
Sure, I'll take it. We are, this week, we are, Marlo has been doing a tremendous amount of training with our instructional aids because this is a new format for them. So all of them are being the opportunity to be trained on things like Zoom, Google Classroom, and so forth. So this week, we're really focusing on getting, getting their skills up to par. And starting next week, full-time, you will see them in the classrooms. So it depends on the classroom setting. In some instances, there'll be one aide in the classroom and she would, might just be assisting the teacher, serving as a model, doing an example, giving students feedback. But in many cases, in many of our classrooms, we have more than one aide. And so we're encouraging teachers to think about utilizing those aides to do direct instruction to students in smaller groups. And that's where they would be doing, as I referred to before, taking the students and doing breakout sessions with them. And in some of our specialized program, we can also use our instructional aids to support and work with students during that personalized learning time. So instead of having to do independent work, they can go work and receive instruction from a live person. So again, this is the new model for us and we are, we are working on it daily to figure out the best use of these staff. But as for now, they'll be live zooming with, with teachers on a daily basis all day long.
And if I may add, if we have a breakout room with one of our paraeducators, there will be another adult in the room. It could be a related services provider or another, another paraeducator.
Okay. And, and parents, I know a lot of times we, we tend to use many terms. I know we spend a lot of time dissecting what is hybrid and some of the other terms that we've used. So when we talk about paraeducators, we're talking about the instructional aids who support our students. And other providers may be a speech therapist or an occupational therapist or someone like that. So any number of staff that provide additional support to students and particularly those with special education needs. So we, so there was a question, again, related to instructional aids. Teachers, can teachers send them into a break room? And I think you just addressed that, to work one-on-one. Would the one-on-one still include the second adult, even if it's a one-to-one support? And I'm seeing heads are nodding. That would be.
Yes, it would be basically a two-to-one if there was only one student because the aides are never going to go into a breakout room alone.
Got it. Thank you very much. And then I think this is referring back to the letter question. I did not receive the general letter that was sent on July 31st. How do I get that resent? So what I would, if I may add this part, I think it's important if there's a specific request for a student and I appreciate the question, I also want to make sure that we don't put personal student information into this format because again, it, it, uh, would violate privacy laws, FERPA laws and, and the like. So if you have a specific question for your child, the first, um, place to address that is going to be at the school site. Communicate with your child's teacher. All of us in the district have the same email address in that it is our first name dot last name at P U S D dot org. So you can email any of us that you see on here as panelists. You can also, uh, email your child's teacher. So if your child's teacher is, is Jose Guerra, then it's jose.guerra@pusd.org, just as an example. But those specific questions about needs for your child are best addressed at the school site. Those of us at the district office, if you have additional questions, um, and you've communicated with the teacher, the principal is going to be your next person. And again, this is that time of year where phones tend to be rather busy. Emails work, um, in terms of that, you can email any of us that you see here for questions and we can redirect. But your child is going to have the best, I'm sorry, your child's teacher is going to have the best initial information for you regarding his or her education. So I just want to reiterate that, I had a question, um, regarding a 504 plan and it's a good opportunity to share that a 504 plan is not a special education program. But again, if you are looking at either the accommodations that your child would have in the 504 program or want to know the status of your child's 504 plan, please email your child's teacher or contact your child's school to find out, uh, that specific information. I did have a couple of questions again about the Zoom and the links and what to do if we can't log on. It's really important at this time, and if you think about the first week of school when we're on campus, the first week of school is that time to get additional materials, to ask those additional questions. If you're not able to log into Zoom, communicate with your child's school, either by telephone or email if possible, because that will allow us to work on the attendance credits for children, which is very important, as well as allowing you to get any assignments that may have been missed. We're working through this with you, we're going to help, uh, support you in distance learning. So again, the, the challenges that tend to come with any school year, have the enhancement, uh, I'm just going to try to use a positive term, have the enhancement with distance learning this year. But please communicate with us. If the links aren't working, uh, it could be an internet connection issue, it could be a device issue. As Ed Tech shared with you earlier, the district website, uh, under departments, both special education and educational technology, our presentations tonight are going to be found under education services. So P U S D district website to departments to ed services. And look on that right-hand margin, that menu of services. We have a link there for special education support. We have a link there for educational technology support. So we want you to know that this is an ongoing relationship. It's an ongoing opportunity for us to get better as a district system and to support you and your child in learning. We know it's challenging, we know the schedules are challenging and we know that many of you are multitasking, trying to support your students as you're trying to go about work and, and the other requirements that you've always had. So please allow us to partner with you and to support you. And you can never ask any question too many times, it's what we're here for and we want to continue, uh, that support and that relationship. I'm just checking quickly the, the queue. Okay, I have a, and bear with me, uh, special ed, just to make sure it isn't a special ed question. The secondary level supports that needs, students rather, that need support in CR classes. How will they have the paraeducators joining their classes? And I think we just covered that with the breakout rooms and having that support available for students. So again, if your student had the instructional aid support on campus, they're going to have that support in the distance learning format, so that will continue. Let's see, also, when will students be able to go back to school physically? As soon as we get the clearance from the Department of Public Health, we're working with the Department of Public Health and the Los Angeles County Office of Education. We're following their guidelines and their guidelines are based on the information that we continue to receive regarding COVID-19 infection rates, mortality rates, um, levels of transmission of the virus. Those are the indicators that we are using. Our superintendent, Mr. Martinez, has shared that we will at least go through the first quarter so that we have an opportunity to do, um, the assessments for ongoing grading and we have a, a period of time. And during this first quarter, we are looking at those reports and getting the guidelines so that we can reopen schools physically as soon as possible. So we're anxious to do that as much as our community, we just want to make sure that we're doing it safely. There's a question about will there be a lunch menu online? Let me work with, uh, food services to get an answer back and we will post something up or send it out to the school site so that they can share that with you. I know that the, the, um, meals right now in the grab-and-go format is a, a different menu selection based on what's available to be brown bagged. Uh, but let me find out what that looks like in terms of a menu. Question, when requesting an IEP, will the 30-day timeframe be the same?
The state and the federal has not changed timeline rules, so any timeline will still be in place. So they will be responded within a request within a 30-day period to hold those meetings.
Got it, thank you. And a clarification, will parents be interacting directly with the case carrier? Or will service providers contact parents directly?
I'll answer that question because it's about related services. I'm going to say it's highly likely that the related services, um, person is going to contact the parent in addition to the case manager. I think in some cases that will depend on accessibility. And so, um, you know, look for remind texts and things like that. If you do have a question about a related service that your child has, my recommendation is as, um, as Christiana was mentioning, it go to the teacher, try to talk to the case manager, also check in with the principal. They'll be able to tell you the name of the person, you can certainly leave a message for that related service provider and then that way they'll know how best they, they can call you back.
Thank you for that. Do we, uh, have paraeducators currently joining classrooms? I know it's just day two, or is there a date? And I'm not sure if you mentioned that previously, when parents can expect to have their, uh, paraeducators joining the class?
Paraeducators are participating in training, uh, some of the trainings that, for example, the teachers had when we first rolled out, uh, distance learning. So you can expect to see aides in their typical roles starting on Monday.
However, Patty, there are some aides that may be participating with.
Absolutely, some of them did their training on Monday.
Yeah, we had a.
Go ahead.
Yeah, some did their training on Monday and some did, went through the training this summer. So we train, um, nearly half of the paraeducators this summer. However, yesterday, this week, they felt that they needed some more refreshers and so we've opened that up for them to continue building their capacity so that they're ready to go, um, hopefully by next week. Some of them are ready to rock and roll, um, as of today, but some of them will need a little more training and just to build their capacity so that they're ready to support students and teachers.
And Christina, going back to the question on the IEPs, I just want to make it clear that all those IEPs, the annual, triennial and requested I E P T meetings will continue to be held virtually. So meaning through video conference, teleconference and any other means of communication. That is somehow what we call a virtual communication. If you previously requested the child's I E P T meeting to be postponed because we were hoping then, this was towards the end of the school year that we would have open in a brick and mortar type of setting, then, and it didn't happen, we're still in distance learning. When you requested a postponement, postponement for those IEPs, your child's I E P now will be rescheduled virtually. Okay, so you will be getting a call from your case managers or your teachers to schedule, schedule them virtually.
Thank you so much for that, for the clarification. A couple of questions and, and some may not be specific to special education, but if there's something to add to that, please feel free to share. I have a question about grading and how it will be assessed as the students, um, are in a distance learning format. Teachers are sharing information regarding grading. As in the, um, in the on-campus environment, there are some assignments that would be same-day assignments, others would be, um, something that would be a multi-day assessment or an assignment. And so it's going to be, um, based on that individual classroom. But we are looking at the fact that we're in a distance learning format and teachers are making those adjustments. And again, we have just begun, but I think a big part of what we're doing is the communication. And we want to make sure that we continue to communicate expectations to parents, expectations to students. And of course, it depends on the age of the student because our, our primary students are preschool and, and kinders and first, second, third. And, and again, depending on the student and the student's needs, you know, parents, you are sharing a lot of that information with us. There was a question about, uh, whether or not a child has to email the teacher if they're having a problem. The schedules that we have, um, incorporate what's called live interaction with teachers on a daily basis. So there's an opportunity for students to connect with the teachers, to talk to teachers, to ask them questions. And so that will continue to be a part of the schedule. The reason I shared that, uh, you as parents can email us is that I want you to know that it isn't just dependent on the student to communicate. We do want to hear from you at the school level particularly, to let us know how your child is doing and to let us know if you have questions or concerns. And sometimes, again, the questions may have to do with connections, uh, equipment, what's working and what isn't. So yes, of course, students can email their teachers, but you don't have to wait for your child to do so. If you have a question or concern, please do that. I had another question regarding, uh, what, how much does it cost per student for the year when they are online? Interesting question, there is an average daily attendance amount and I can get that from, um, our state because we do have allocations per student. But it isn't adjusted based on the online because the teachers are still providing instruction, the staff support is in place. But I can get that information and we'll post that up online with our FAQs as we've done with other responses. So I, I want to make sure I quote that correctly. I do not see, is there anything, and I think it might address one of the questions about support at the secondary. Is there anything that you can share with us specifically for special education students at secondary that might be different or a different, um, I know, and we know it's dependent on the IEP and the goals, but does it, are there any specific differences in terms of special education secondary students that you'd like to share versus elementary level? Any generalized pieces there?
Um, at the secondary level, the students are still going to be receiving all of the supports and services that are in their IEPs currently. They're going to have their case managers make sure that they're on the schedule and scheduled into classes, that they need to make sure that they earn credit and then they stay on track to transition to the next level. For example, if they're in middle school, we want to make sure that they take the classes necessary to prepare them for high school. If they're in high school, they are going to take the classes they need to earn either their, um, diploma or certificate of completion, depending on what track they're on. They're also going to continue to have their transition plans, um, updated by the teachers. And during the IEPs, they'll make sure that those are in place and they're addressing those needs as well.
Thank you. Is there a plan to make up the hours that students missed in terms of support from specialists, for example, in the spring?
Christina, we'd like to have that question, uh, sent individually. I mean, specifically to the school site. And, uh, perhaps if that could be also sent to the, um, question to special education via a phone call. It's going to get to our specific program administrator.
Perfect, thank you. So for the, for that particular question then, if you would connect with your school site to share that information because the services are individualized based on the student, based on the goals. So we do want to make sure we're addressing those in that manner, so we will do that. And then the other question I have has to do with, um, can students have transportation to another school in terms of getting services that may not be currently available? And I do want to share, first of all, that as a district, we're in a distance learning format, so there isn't a school site that's open to provide services on campus. If you have concerns, however, about specific services for your child, again, that's going to be a follow-up with your child's teacher so that we can share what is available in terms of distance learning and what are some of the services that will resume once we're back on campus. I've gone to the end of the queue, so I want to.
And if I may add, Christina, there's no in-person service, whether it's a related service or not. So I just want to make it clear.
Absolutely, thank you so much for that. So I want to thank our special education team for being with us this evening. Again, if we have additional questions that come up later, I will share those with you, with the department and then we'll get those answers out to our community. At this time, I would like to, uh, share with you that we will have an additional town hall next Monday. We'll review again, any of the additional questions that come to us and we will share again information regarding technology support as we have done. Thank you again, special education team for joining us and Mrs. Ramundo, if you will close us out, please.
Thank you.
Parents, we know that was a tremendous amount of information, however, it was extremely valuable and will be very useful as we move forward in the year. I want to share something from Linda Carleen from the Hopkins University. She asked us, how do we best help our child throughout distance learning? She gives us a few tips that are very helpful. She says to us, know your child's expectations and how best they learn. Determine what activities are best for them. Are they very motivated in the morning, are they best in the evening? What works best for them and keep in mind what works best for you. Also encourage movement, it's very important for your children to get up and get the wiggles out regardless of the age. Even the high schoolers need a stretch, need to walk around a little bit and take some time to move around. One of the things that's key is to reduce the distractions. Try to help your child stay focused while they are online doing their discipline. Adjust the schedule if needed. If your child needs time, more time or less time, adjust the schedule and communicate with your child's teacher. That's a very important element we want to emphasize. Also know when to give your child a break. And also, this is a very difficult time for some, provide immediate feedback. It's very important to acknowledge your children with some very positive words of encouragement. And remember, the author Claudia Pulsford says to us, "Every day is a chance to begin again." Don't focus on what may or may have not gone correct. Work better tomorrow and be positive and encouraging with your children. We thank you for a wonderful opportunity and we look forward to meeting with you again next week. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening, take care.